I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 12, 2024 regular meeting of the Eastern City Council. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation led by our own Pastor Bernie, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if everyone will please stand and please mute your silence while you're salivating in the buses for the grace of the last thing.
Lord, we do thank you for this day and thank you for each and every person that is here and is present tonight, Lord, and we just ask that you would help us, Lord, to make right decisions concerning the city of Eastman and all its people, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us. We ask that you would continue to go with us, lead us, guide us in every way possible. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America into the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
For those of us who have been following us over the last several months, you've noticed that we have had a vacant chair as a representative for our 5th district. But we are excited today to swear in Pastor Dewayne Bernie to fulfill his obligation for the district file. So at this time, Pastor Bernie, you'll stand, and Ms. Lopp is going to swear you in.
I am. Please, I will swear that you will faithfully perform duties and municipal member of the city of Eastman in support of the benefits of the state, of all the citizens and all the state of Georgia, and that you are not a holder of public community or any other subject business, do not hold any office of trust under the government of the U.S. or any other state or in foreign states, and you are by the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited, and you are, by the laws of the state of Georgia, prohibited to hold it. You are qualified to hold this office according to the laws of the state of Georgia, and you are a resident of the citizens and the private required by the city charter, the public safety, and the laws of the state.
Amen.
Okay. Thank you.
We are excited to finally have a full panel once again. And so we'll move right along. April, did you want to get any pictures with Pastor Bernie?
She already got them.
Okay. So moving right along, first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Dr. Barry, do we have any additions that we need to make to the agenda?
No, none that I'm aware of.
Okay. There being none, council, do I now have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Sheffield, I'll second.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries now. The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the October 28, 2024 regular meeting. Council, I believe we have those before us or in the packet that we received over the weekend. Was there any discussion that we needed to have in relation to the minutes? There's. All right. There being none, council, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 28, 2024 regular meeting? So moved. I have a motion from Councilman Peacock, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands. Motion carries now. There being no unfinished business, we'll move right along into new business, beginning with our monthly fire report. Chief Maxwell?
For the month of October, we had one non-working structure fire in the city, none in the county. We had one county working structure fire. Fire-related calls of service, we had five in the city, five in the county, for a total of 11. EMS calls, medical related, we had 37 in the city, 16 in the county, total of 53. Motor vehicle accidents, seven in the city, two in the county, for a total of nine. Public service calls would be eight in the city, two in the county, for a total of 10, and that would be trees down and fire alarms. Canceling route, we had one in the city, one in the county, for a total of two. Mutual aid received one in the city, and we gave two in the county, for a total of three. And public safety, we did, this is fire prevention week, so we did, went to all the schools and did all the stop, drop, and roll and the fire education for the kids. So I did that for a total of about 1,500 kids during that week. So that's the total of calls.
Did you demonstrate how to do the stop, drop, and roll for the kids?
I sure did.
Were you able to implement what we just said in our office?
Say again?
The new stop, drop, and roll?
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. And just a side note, this Friday, we'll have Jonathan Greer and Zach Page, the graders waiting from the academy, so we'll have those two guys full-time. They both graduated, did exceptionally well, they were both leaders in their classes.
This Friday?
This kind of Friday, yes.
Where was that graduation to be on that?
In Precinct, at the academy. And we have hired one new person, Mr. Ryan Kirkle. He'll start with us this next pay period. He is uncerified, he doesn't go to school as well. At least, we have five full-time openings, and we still have several volunteer openings. And we did also bring on four part-time people from Cochrane Fire Department that kind of help us, since we're so low in numbers right now. So they've been helping out a tremendous amount to try to bring our workload to an attainable level.
Council, do y'all have any questions for Chief Maxwell?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving right along, our monthly police report. Chief Cooper?
All right, for the month of October, we used 1,061 gallons of fuel and patrol 12,606 miles. We answered 758 calls, 20 traffic accidents, and made 153 arrests or citations. We also had, I know y'all know Josh King, he's a part-time worker for us. He's going to become a full-time starter next week.
Oh, wow. Could you give us an explanation why we're having so many traffic accidents? There's 20 this month, or there's past months, last. Seems kind of high.
That's about the normal.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, that's about the normal for the month.
Okay. All right. Council, do we have any other questions for Chief Cooper?
Thank you for the work that you have done, Chief.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right. Now we'll move to our department head reports. As some of y'all are aware, we have all of our department heads come forward and bringing forth to you, the citizens, what we're doing each and every month, and you'll know exactly how your attachment is being spent. Mr. White?
All right. The COVID, of course, in the building inspector we issued had $260 in building structure permits, $400 worth of electrical installations, and a house moving permit. And then with the club project, we've got the bids for the units and all that have come back in for the AC units and the heat and water.
I think we should be having something she needs.
You'll do that part later. The bid part.
Talking about what we're going to look there?
There's someone standing right there.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Anyway, as far as the blighted properties up in Maryland, y'all should have received spreadsheet on those. Ready to go into them, waiting on some legal advice from Ms. Lopp.
Okay.
Before we move on to some of them.
Meeting, Lord. Okay. And this is the one, is this the list that you had provided to us several weeks ago, or is this an updated list?
This is an updated list.
Okay.
The person has it up front.
Okay. And so right now, we're just waiting on some legal advice, you said, from Ms. Lopp, and then we'll proceed, send out letters?
Yes.
All right. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. White? Just continue, keep doing the great work there, again. Thank you, Chief.
I agree.
All right, next up, Mr. Pittman.
Good evening. Oh, for the month of October, we had 43 cutoffs, 42, I mean, 24 cutoffs. We had some skipped cutoffs last month due to the hurricane. So we'll be working tomorrow. If you haven't paid more bill, you might want to get it in tonight. Water check leaks, 11. We actually had 17 water leaks that were fixed. We actually had 77 water and sewer locates. We inspected five meters. We set three new meters. Inspected one water valve. GPS, two new items in our system. We cooled four meters, old sprinkler meters that we GPSed also. We had one new sewer installed. We actually cleaned 16 line cleans, and I will remind again that most of that comes from grease or wipes in the pipes, more grease than anything. Sewer manhole leak repaired. We actually had one that, out at the airport, that started erasing in, that we had to get in and do some grouting in. We cleaned up one stormwater ditch and helped random them on one ditch. Total work order was 206 for the month, and we used 650 gallons of fuel for the month. The other thing is, is there's going to be some letters hitting the community for lead copper stuff on galvanized lines. It's 1,237 letters that will be going out to the public. There's nothing to be a long run about. We're following all federal guidelines. I mean, we're in complete compliance with federal guidelines, and do not forget when you see these letters.
So this is simply a letter that was mandated, and you have to deliver it from the federal government?
Absolutely. The other thing is, is Popco has moved off the ninth avenue through Congo. Congo Lane's pretty much been cleared. They're about halfway up Congo Lane now. In the next few days, she should be crossing back over onto the left side. You was looking at it going up. Popco is pretty much moving right along pretty good.
So they're staying on schedule?
Yeah, I ain't going to say I'm scheduled. They're moving on pretty good.
That's a good political answer, I like it.
I'm going to be honest with you. And I also did, I wanted to update today, we did get an email today on some paving. Our city engineers did say they would be moving in and relocating on weekends next week, and that's what we saw. I'm going to update the public on that. That's 14th Avenue and?
Oregon Creek.
Oregon Creek. And that's what the emails we got. Whether that happens or not, once again, I'm not in control of that. It's all we know. But we got an email today saying they was moving in.
That's the 14th Avenue, Oregon Creek, Arizona, as you asked. As soon as we can get them there.
Based on the contract terms they have between now and April 12, 2025, to be 100% complete, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, sir, then come to that. Council, is there any other questions that we have with the city?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along, Matt?
All right, for the month of October, this is how we spend our hours. 31 hours cleaning clear fiders of builders, 154 lab and sampling, zero on belt presence ludge, 70 on wheel station and wheel repair, five on lawn maintenance, 73 on plant maintenance, 40 on routine rounds, 24 on education and training, 63 on management duties, and 104 on plant operation, which is a grand total of 533. So our water report, water pump from Wales, 37,376 gallons, which is 1.206 LGD. Water use is at the treatment plant, 531,000 gallons. And then treated water released from the treatment plant was 22,490,000 gallons, which is 0.725 LGD. And our wastewater lab charged $5,564.95 for wastewater testing. The service was provided for six towns. Usually seven of them.
Do we have influx water, wastewater, due to the hurricane handling?
Oh, yes.
Any significant damage to any of our equipment during that timeframe?
Our main thing was just influx of water.
Council, is there any other questions we have?
We didn't get a drop of rain in this month of October.
Dry.
Dry.
Any other questions for Mr. White?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Fordham?
How are you all? What's your sound? For the month of October, we had 16 total hours of home calls, 15 hours curb and gutters, 41 hours of ditches. Tree limb cutting, which is cleaning up form debris also out of kept stuff from the wind truck, 615 total hours. We had 144 hours of cutting grass, 150 hours of other, 10 hours of potholes, 33 hours special events, 40 of trash pickup, and 102 of wind truck pickup. Or 167.
Do we have projections of where you wish to have it to be cleaned up?
Looked random and dreadful. I thought we were above 90.
It's looking good.
Yeah.
Looking very good. Great for all work out and they can do your best. It's been phenomenal. I've not had any complaints, have I? Anything not being picked up in the timely manner between?
Last day, 45 hours.
It was 20 feet high of 449 around, I believe?
449, 24 hours. That's right. As of last week, when I left on Friday, like I said, all the runs out right around, and like I said, I got a lift up. There's still a few that gone neighborhoods where I bring that down now. But for the month of August, about 95, 150 up on it. So like I said, there should start on delivery on his own hill, back at 11:00. It's hot and all.
So calm.
And we have Christmas lights coming up, ourselves coming to be in the business of happening. We're not going to do it until the day after we get back to Thanksgiving. Because I had a lot of people asking, you know, we started it right after Halloween before, we started it, it plus either way, so the day after we get back to Thanksgiving, we're going.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for everything, Brian. Gerald, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Was there any questions we have on the 40?
No, thank you for your job you're doing, guys.
Ms. Coffee, you say?
Is there anything the street department can do with the influx of fire ants on Hawkinsville Highway, I notice particularly? I mean, it's like they've moved into a, you know, they've made a neighborhood out there all the way down the road, but it's on the right of way. It's not like, it's like right down the edge of the road. I've never seen anything like it.
I've never seen anything like that either, Miss Coffee. I've seen them all over the place.
Well, I figured it was more than Hawkinsville Highway, but I don't know, it's a pain in the neck to sprinkle that stuff, but I don't know if there's anything that can be done.
We'll sort of look into it for you, Miss Coffee, just see what we can do. But thank you for the question. I greatly appreciate you. Council, is there any other questions we may have? There's. Okay. All right, moving right along, who have we missed? Hello? Okay. All right, moving right along, item number 4 on the new business, to approve the bills for October 29th to November 12th, 2024. Council, I believe you can see those before us, any discussion that we may need to have? The Holder Street Cameras, Diana, does it, you want to speak on that, just so people understand what that is?
Yes. So those cameras are actually the ones that Coop worked with us on to get a grant for. Those are the ones that we're putting out in the different neighborhoods to try to combat some of the gang activity crime issues that we're having. He's going to be mapping those out for us, but he has gone ahead and ordered the 12 of those with the casings, the cases that come with them. He's going to be putting those up with the Holder group as soon as those are in and are ready to go. He's also working on, he being Coop, by the way, he's working to check out exactly where he wants to put them and what kind of internet and power access we have for those. But that is offset by a grant, so that 56,200 is completely paid for by G Macran.
Correct. I appreciate it. I just wanted you to explain exactly what that was, in case somebody from the public wanted to know. Chief Cooper, go ahead, sir.
Just to add on that, we are currently trying to map where we want to put them, but we're running some issues with getting permits, put them on poles. Georgia Power said we can't put them on their poles, so we're trying to find a workaround.
Is there any possibility of doing a stand-in on the pole?
That's a possibility, and also, I spoke to Georgia Power of the lighting section, and I'm waiting to hear back again about possibly putting on the lighting poles.
Can we give a reason as to why not on their poles?
It was just asked, was it that?
Okay.
The not very fine was put Christmas decorations on the poles.
The other problem that we're going to have with it is wherever we put them, they're going to have to put a transformer up to step the power down to get it to fix them.
Right. Okay.
But yeah, this entire building that's up here is what Dana said that we paid for out of the ground.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right. Any questions or comments from the public? Council, any other discussion we're in? There being none, council, do I have a motion to approve the bills for October 29th to November 12th, 2024? I have a motion from Councilwoman Williams, I'll second.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, motion carries now. The next item on the agenda is the quote for the PTSD insurance coverage. April, do you want to carry this one, or do you want to explain this one?
Sure. Blink was, how feel, this one's 451, okay. How feel 451 requires that we cover PTSD insurance on all first responders, I mean, both fire and publics. So we have insurance through Germa and Madison as a quote, and it appears that just covering the minimum, which is $3,000 as a lifetime benefit, and the disability is 60% of their earnings, and it also covers for volunteers, but it looks like the sum is $4,835 a year. Is that correct? Is that right?
That's for the annual credit for components one and two.
Yes, okay. Sorry, I just haven't read it in a few days. But you can opt to go to a higher limit, and that's totally up to y'all. Of course, on the next page, it goes up, you know, it can go up between $5,000 to $6,800 a year, depending on how much you want to raise the limit. So the required minimum limit would cost us $4,835.
All right. Ms. Lynn, do you remember when we were doing our budget planning, which one we had allocated, or which one we had earmarked for?
We, as far as specific amounts or limits, we didn't determine that, but what we budgeted was a total of 6150 for this coverage. So the 4835 is well within that limit. And then even if you guys wanted to increase it to 5,000 or 10,000, our estimate was for 16 total police and 25 total fire for full-time and volunteer.
And we're at the number I'm correct, or close to?
Getting a little closer to it, yes. I will not say we're maxed out at that, or at that number specifically, yet.
So council, we first have to decide, do we want to do what requires more than minimum? Do we want us to step it up?
We stay in the minimum for a moment, to see where we get our staffing up to. All right, to get a solid number, then we can see if we really want to increase it to it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bernie? Okay. All right, so, council, that sentence for the council to do the $4,835 for the PTSD insurance coverage as required by the state. I now need a motion to approve the PTSD quote in the amount of $4,835.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Peacock, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bernie? It's good to say, you know. All right. All in favor, show of hands? Motion carries now. Next item on the agenda, Mr. White, if you want to come up for this one, this is in relation to the club renovation project bids. I know you have something in relation to this.
Yes, we put out bids for the spray foam insulation to the gymnasium and AC units. I have received bids back in for those of wall-to-wall on spray foam insulation. They'd be at $18,920.
Okay, were they the only?
They were all a bid, yes.
What was the amount, $18,000, what again?
$18,920.
$18,000, okay. All right. Okay, and the next bid?
AC units were, we had a bid from all three of our local AC supplier houses. Massengill came in at $41,724. Pruitt-Air came in at $33,488. They had a five-year compressor, one-year parts and labor warranty with theirs. Not, excuse me, Massengill had no information with theirs. Barlow Air came in at $36,373. That's 10-year compressor warranty, 10-year parts and labor warranty.
Okay. All right, so they by far had the best warranty option out of the free, is that right, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. And what was the total number on Massengill and on Pruitt, one more time? I'm sorry, sir.
Massengill was $41,724.
Okay, and Pruitt was $33?
Pruitt was $33,488.
All right, so only for a five-year warranty?
And then one-year parts and labor.
Wow. And parts and labor on Barlow was 10 years and 10 years, correct? Okay. All right.
That's a good one, brother.
As far as the gutter bid, we put out, we received none. I will reach out to some gutter people I know, and I'll come back and deal with these things.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Ms. Lopp, we have to have two separate bids on this in relation, one to the home and installation, and the second being who we choose for the AC repair.
Well, you've got plenty of bids for the AC.
Correct.
You just have one bid.
And it was a bid out for three, four weeks' time, is that right, sir?
Yes.
You asked the bids, that's what you're required to do, so unless you want to seek out the bids.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, as far as making a motion, do I need to make a motion to approve the bid that Mr. Wall?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
All right. Council, we'll go ahead and handle the first one, first in relation to the spray foam insulation.
Yes, sir. Is this in, or is it within our scope of funding?
Yes, sir, of course, there's a lot of that one.
Okay. Yes, sir, that's all I'm thinking.
Good question. Thanks, sir. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry about that. All right, was there any questions from the public in relation to these items before we vote on? All right, there being none, council, we'll break this up into two separate motions. Do I have a motion to approve the spray foam insulation to?
Wall-to-wall.
Wall-to-wall insulation in the amount of $18,928?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Peacock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands? Okay, motion carries now. All right, next item, as far as the AC replacements, we have three bids provided by Mr. White, one for Massengill in the amount of $41,724, the second from Pruitt Heating and Air, $33,488. They offered a five-year warranty and only a one-year parts and labor warranty. And then Barlow Heating and Air for the amount of $36,373, and they offer both a 10-year warranty on compressor and parts and labor. Council, what is your preference as far as which company we want to go with?
I would pick a motion to W70 and reform.
From Barlow, okay.
A second. Third?
All right, we have a second and a third. All right, so, that being the state council, I have a motion from Councilwoman Williams to go with the bid for Barlow Heating and Air for $36,373. I have a second, Councilman Bernie and Councilman Peacock, all in favor, show of hands? Okay, motion carries now. All right. All right, and was there, was there a third? Oh, you said you were going to seek some more bids on the gutter, right? Okay. So moving right along, item number seven, the first reading of the annexation of property at Soakton Highway slash JT Barlow Road. Dr. Barry, you want to take this one?
We got a request to annex in the area known as the Hilltop Store. It's bound to Carson number 0608022, and the city attorney had reviewed it and it appears to be in order.
All right, so, no issue there.
Well, right now, this is the proposed ordinance, and so this will be your first reading to adopt it, but tomorrow, the county will get notice on it. I was trying to cut down the time period.
Sure.
So the ordinance, if you'll adopt it tonight, notice will be given to the county. And it is continuous to the Soakton Highway, which goes all the way out to the airport, which is city property.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from the public in relation to this agenda item? Okay, there being none, council will have a motion to approve the first reading of the annexation of property at Soakton Highway slash JT Barlow Road. Okay, there being none, uh, council will have a motion to approve the first reading of the annexation of property commonly called Hilltop Store at the Suckerton Highway, uh, at the corner of Suckerton Highway and JT Barlow Road.
So move.
I have a motion from Councilman Peacock, I have a second.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands. Motion carries now. The next item on the agenda is the Police Department Resolution. Dr. Baron, Chief Cooper, you want this one?
All right, so last year, we bought new sidearms with confiscated funds uh to replace what we're trying to get rid of now. So we're basically asking council if we can sell the firearms that we previously had that were bought with confiscated funds. We'd like to first offer them to the officers, which is kind of a routine practice. And then if they don't buy them, it'll go into an auction.
All right, Ms. Wall, do you see any issue with that?
No, I prepared the resolution that outlines your requirements and the code. And it'll be overseen by, should be named when I'm doing that. And I understand it's historically been done in, in the past.
State Patrol does it too? State does it as well?
Our, our code just requires some things that are covered in the resolution.
All right, no problem. Thank you, Chief. Counsel, is there any other questions for Chief Cooper?
Yes, sir.
All right, were there any questions from the public? All right, there being none, council to have a motion to approve the Police Department Resolution.
So move.
I have a motion from Councilman Peacock, I have a second.
Second.
Double second, Councilman Williams, Councilman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands. Motion carries now. All right, last item on the agenda, uh, Mr. Carter Martin Keyhaze, uh, bringing forth a report about community-based civil defense. We're happy to have you here, Mr. Keyhaze.
Thank you for having me. So I apologize, I only have four of these, but the intention is that y'all share.
Ms. Williams, I'd be happy to share.
And, uh, and I have a book I'd like to give to the city there. I found very interesting. Um, those of you that don't know me, my name's Martin Keyhaze. I, I am a citizen of Eastman Dodge County. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the city council and my fellow Eastman Dodge County citizens on a topic that has become extremely important to me. A topic that I feel is important to our community, and quite frankly, to the rest of the country. And that is community-based civil defense. I'd like to begin with a reading of scripture from Nehemiah that I feel speaks for the topic I am presenting this evening. And it goes, thence that I am to them, ye see the distress that we are in. How Jerusalem life wasteth, and the gates thereof are burned with fire. Come and let us build up the wall of Jerusalem, that we be no more a reproach. Then I told them of the hand of my God, which was good upon me, as also the king's words that he had spoken unto me. And they said, let us rise up and build, so they strengthened their hands for this good work. So civil defense. Define civil defense as the system of protective measures and emergency relief activities conducted by civilians in case of hostile attack, sabotage, or natural disaster. This definition appears to have come into use first in the nineteen thirties. Some today may remember the civil defense of old. It is now a relic of the past. However, the decades that have passed since the old Cold War-era civil defense organizations were discontinued has seen an increase in severe natural and man-made disasters throughout the country. And the modern era has many new threats that were not foreseen when the current emergency management structure was created. While formal civil defense organizations developed in the twentieth century, the idea, were, were developed in the twentieth century, the idea of civil defense is hardly novel. It is something that humans have practiced for thousands of years. We build communities in part to collectively care for and defend one another. Safety in numbers. American communities through the middle of the twentieth century were relatively self-reliant. But I would argue that today, this is no longer the case. In the twenty-first century, we are faced with threats to our communities that are almost too great to wrap our heads around. And that is if we're, are even willing to acknowledge those threats. Let me quote from a twenty seventeen report from the Senate Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs concerning critical infrastructure. The United States depends on its critical infrastructure, particularly the electric power grid, as all critical infrastructure sectors are to some degree dependent on electricity to operate. A successful nuclear electromagnetic pulse attack against the United States could cause the death of approximately ninety percent of the American population. Similarly, a geomagnetic disturbance could have equally devastating effects on the power grid. Now, my intention in reading you this quote is not to shock, I promise. It's rather to clear, to clear the mind and focus us on what has been identified as a serious threat to our community and way of life. Michael Mabey, in his book, The Civil Defense Book, Emergency Preparedness for a Rural or Suburban Community, and that's the book that I'm giving to you all, writes, quote, "We Americans are generations removed from adversity and generations removed from self-reliance. This makes us weak. Anybody who lived through the Great Depression is in their eighties or nineties now. The rest of us were born and grew up dependent on technology, specifically the power grid. We are not self-reliant, we are grid-reliant. Everything is fine as long as all our infrastructures work. Food, water, sanitation, medical care, and our government. But all of these infrastructures, including basic rule of law, are completely dependent on the power grid. The majority of people don't think of it. And therefore, without electric grid, there is no food, no water, no sewers, no sanitation, and quickly degrading medical care and rule of law." If ever there was an existential threat to our community, I believe this is it. We have been warned of this threat for some years now. It has been recognized by many, even by some in the Federal Emergency Management Agency, that the current emergency management process has not worked very well for Americans as it has failed to see the value of the citizen population as a resource for the community. The emergency management process that took the place of civil defense has looked at the civilian population as something to save, not something to employ as additional resources for the benefit of the community. In a congressional testimony in twenty, uh, two thousand and eleven, then FEMA Administrator Craig Fugate stated, quote, "Government can and will continue to serve disaster survivors. However, we fully recognize that a government-centric approach to disaster management will not be enough to meet the challenges posed by a catastrophic incident. That is why we must fully engage our entire societal capacity close foot."
Mr. Keyhaze.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your presentation that you're bringing before us.
Yes, sir.
Typically, we've had about a three-minute timeline.
Yes, sir.
And I've allowed you to exceed it.
Yes, sir.
Just for the sake of argument, could you summarize exactly what, what, what this civil defense would entail for our community and what is needed on, in your mind?
Yes, yes, sir. Well, and it, I should have told you that I have it down to about fourteen minutes. I, I, I would implore you that you let me follow this idea through, please, if, if that's all right.
Counsel, is that okay?
Continue or not?
Go ahead, Mr. Keyhaze.
Thank you so much. Okay, in, in August of twenty twelve, two Republicans and two Democrats introduced House Resolution seven sixty-two, expressing the sense of the House of Representatives regarding community-based civil defense and power generation. Four recommendations were encouraged in the resolution. One encourages every community to develop its own civil defense program, working with citizens, leaders, and institutions, ranging from local fire halls, schools, and faith-based organizations to create sustainable local infrastructure and planning capacity so that it might mitigate high-impact scenarios and be better prepared to survive and recover from these worst-case disaster scenarios, and be better able to affordably and sustainably meet the needs of the community in times of peace and tranquility. Two, it encourages every citizen uh to develop an individual emergency plan to prepare for the absence of government assistance for extended periods. Three, encourages each local community to foster the capability of providing at least twenty percent of its own critical needs, such as local power generation, food and water, while protecting local infrastructure whenever possible from threats that threaten centralized infrastructure, and to do so with the urgency and importance inherent in all of nation's civil defense programs developed by citizens and their local communities. And finally, four, encourages state governments and federal agencies to support the ability of local communities to become stronger, self-reliant, and better able to assist neighboring communities in times of great need. The resolution failed to acquire passing vote. The sense of Congress is still important. The sense of that bipartisan committee was that a community-based civil defense program is a good idea for the modern community. Pretty honest stuff coming from the federal government. It only takes a little bit of reading between the lines of these formerly written government documents to realize that we are being told that, I believe. At the end of the day, we're on our own. So not only did we arrive here, maybe our current state of vulnerability exists because we have forgotten in a sense who we are and what brought us here. Technology has lulled us into a sense of complacency. We have advocated responsibility for our general welfare to government agencies far away. But we should not despair, we come from long lines of resilient, freedom-loving people. We can continue to be, but we must take responsibility for one another. In an extreme event that is nationwide, there will be no cavalry coming to our rescue. All we will have is each other. Our community still has everything that needs to thrive. When I look around this community, I feel hopeful. We have many skilled and hard-working citizens, farmers, doctors and nurses, active and retired military, engineers, pastors, emergency responders, judges and attorneys, carpenters, electricians, teachers, chefs, mechanics. I see all the elements of a healthy and self-reliant community. I see a God-fearing and patriotic people, bright minds, strong backs, and warm hearts. I've grown to feel brotherly love and affection for this community and the people here in. So allow me to personalize the definition of civil defense. In short, it is the citizens of Eastman and Dodge County, Georgia, together taking responsibility for the safety, security, and general well-being of one another. Establishing this level of preparedness, if we choose to, will not be easy. It will require much time and resources, but many benefits will come from these efforts, some obvious, some more subtle. Most obvious in preparing for the worst, we will be prepared for every emergency of a lesser degree. The work required will challenge each of us. It will force us to form strong community bonds, authentic person-to-person, shoulder-to-shoulder bonds. Facebook and TikTok will not be sufficient to complete the tasks ahead. We may even find them a distraction. Finally, in preparing for the worst, we can lay our heads down at night at peace, knowing that we have done all in our power to protect our children and grandchildren and our community and country. Counselmen and women, I present to you some very important reading. I urge you to read every page, I know you're busy, but I really do, of, of the documents presented to you today. They are replete with citations to congressional commission hearings and historical accounts. If you would please pay particular attention to the, the historical stories told. When you read about Ukraine in the nineteen thirties, or China in the nineteen fifties, or the Balkans in the nineteen nineties, place yourself there. Imagine that the children described are your children. Realize that the United States is not immune to the hardships and suffering described. In closing, let me summarize what I respectfully ask of you as leaders. Again, please read and share with your constituents the literature I share with you today. I have electronically saved copies of this literature. In fact, there's a thumb drive in one of the notebooks that has all of that except for this book. Please lend your support to the formation and operation of a local civil defense organization. I have presented a draft of a resolution that you may adopt, if you'd like to look at that. Uh, this resolution would go a long way in showing your support to the community of this effort. Encourage this dialogue with your counterparts in county government and surrounding governments. And then finally, I would like to point out that our city code of ordinances, section ten dash four titled Emergency Management Organization seems to lend itself to city government and citizen civil defense partnership, which is encouraging. So finally, if, if you have any questions going forward, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Co-section once again, then, Mark?
Yes, sir, it is. Well, it's all from section ten, which is Defense and Emergency Management. And the section that has a chart of, uh, if you will, the Emergency Management Organization is ten dash four. And, and really, I'm just bringing this, it, it's kind of food for thought tonight. It's something that I'm thinking a lot about, just getting my fellow citizens to see how engaged they want to be in this. And just from what I've read, these kind of things work best when your local government is really in, a team and in partnership with this citizen group. So, um, again, all of that, that literature you have there, certainly if any citizens reach out to you about it, feel free to direct them to me. I would be very happy to talk with them.
Thank you, Mark. Sir, I'm certainly, you know, we'll, council will certainly take this back and digest it, kind of understand exactly all that you brought for us, and certainly we'll, uh, have some internal discussions on how.
Sure, sure. And, and again, it's, it's really, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I've been reading up on it, and quite frankly, it's, uh, it's, it's been pretty amazing to me, you know, there's, there's been a lot of things done in Congress that I didn't even know about, so. But I, I thank you so much for your time, and thank you for the extension of time, I appreciate it.
Glad, I'm glad to add you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keyhaze. Counsel, is there any questions y'all have in mind before you?
No, because not this time.
Thanks for bringing that to us, Mark.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving right along, uh, City Manager's report. Dr. Baron?
Just to keep you on the floor, reminding everybody, we are hiring from the Street Department, Fire Department, and the Fleet Department. Everybody's putting in a good job, they're gonna put in applications to City Eastman. Uh, we also have the Lions Club Christmas Parade coming up, I believe it's Saturday, December fourteenth. I'd encourage anybody to check Lions Club Facebook page and reach out to the Lions in more detail. And again, to reiterate what Jack and Will are talking about, the blind initiative's in full swing now. Please try to clean up your property and get in compliance with our ordinance. And cut off days tomorrow for the water deal, so if you have anything, please make arrangements and come in and pay attention.
All right, uh, moving right along, uh, other business from counsel, and we'll start with the annual Pastor Bernie. Anything from you, my friend? We're just deciding to have you on the panel. Ms. Peacock?
Yes, sir, no, at this time.
All right, Ms. Sheffield? Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir, just welcome, Mr. Bernie.
Nothing from me, uh, you know, been a great weekend before, a great week, and just hate this time change. But, uh, other than that, uh, council, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilman Peacock, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Sheffield, all in favor, show of hands? Motion carries, you announce, being adjourned.